Citizens can come and communicate with us. We pray that we don't take that for granted, but that we represent our town well, that we make decisions that honor you, that honor the citizens here. Let us make decisions that are wise, that we use discernment and wisdom to navigate the things of this town. Let us do so well, and we pray for safety. We pray for any of those that are working outside in this heat, that you keep them safe as well, and just watch over this town and everyone here. We thank you for all your blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you open the meeting with a fudge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding an ordinance, a public hearing and ordinance to approve the rezoning of property located at 931 Merriweather Road. Let the record show, we officially open a public hearing.
All right, yes. So, this one is, the applicant is RMU, Rollin Municipal Utilities. Property is technically owned by the City of Rolla because the City of Rolla holds RMU's properties. The property was, has already been purchased, and so the request is to rezone this property to the P Public Zoning District. So, I've got an aerial photo kind of showing that basically the property is highlighted in the red. It's all trees right now. It is kind of surrounded by some multifamily uses in the area. Turn on the zoning map. So, right now it's zoned R3, which is the multifamily zoning district. As I said, the request is to rezone it to the P Public Zoning District because the P Public Zoning District is the one that's appropriate for public-type uses. So, RMU, the proposal is to basically develop this property for a water system improvement, for basically a booster pump station, to increase the water pressure in the area as part of a larger project that they're working on in this area. This is a street view looking at the property. As I said, it's all trees. This is the view from Merriweather Road, which is actually that dead-end road. I'll come back to the map and kind of show you. It's this dead-end road here. The property also has frontage on White Columns Drive, but they won't be accessing White Columns Drive. The access will be from this Merriweather Road. And so, that's why I showed this one. This is kind of next door to an apartment building on, well, there's apartment buildings on either side, but this is, right now they'd be taking away the trees you see on the frontage. This is the site plan. And as I said, the build, the development would be on that part of the property. So, from White Columns Road, you wouldn't really be able to see anything. The RMU intends to leave as many trees as possible on the property. So, what this is, there'd be a building built, and this pump would be inside of this building. And, yeah. The comprehensive plan doesn't get into details on exactly where public use, these types of zoning districts are appropriate. Basically, it's appropriate for things that are being used for public uses or whatever. It does encourage that improvements being done to utilities be prioritized in the existing developed areas of the city. The proposed improvements are needed for existing and potential future developments in that area. It should have a minimal impact on the surrounding properties. As I said, the intent is to leave as many trees as possible. And since the building, the pump is inside of a building, and the pump itself, I've got somebody from RMU will talk about that, but basically it's not very loud, so you shouldn't, it'd be an issue with sound. And then, traffic coming and going from this facility, I guess somebody comes by once per day, but it's, it's not, you shouldn't see much going on on the property. Planning and zoning took a look at this and did recommend approval with a vote of four to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I have a question, Tom. When you send notice to owners, is it just to owners of record? Does it go to tenants?
We do just send, only to send to property owners. It does get a sign posted on the property for, so if somebody in the area were to see it, and then, of course, it's posted in the newspaper. It is a good segue. I meant to kind of talk about this whole idea is an increase in transparency from the way things used to be. It used to be the city would buy properties, go through, you know, city council for funding and whatnot, and then something would happen. The zoning part oftentimes was kind of forgotten about. In addition, with the way, with the updates to the zoning code, we also are sending out site plans, or we're including a site plan review with the planning and zoning review, I should say. And this is to give, along with our public notice that people received, that now people in the area will be aware that something is happening, whereas before they might not if they weren't paying attention to the city council meetings, they wouldn't have been aware of anything happening at all.
I appreciate that. I did go by there. I saw the, obviously, the zoning sign. Are you saying you posted something with tenants or with, because the two closest dwellings are, obviously, they're going to be tenants, and are they aware that the work will happen and that they'll, do you know?
We do not mail to the residents of the properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there another structure in town that would give us a comparison of what residents or, you know, locals might expect the new structure to look like?
I think the representative from RMU can, it'd be better to answer that one.
Okay.
There are wells, wells located throughout the city. I don't know how this compares to a well, but I'll compare that.
Chad, do you want to answer that?
Sure. For all of you, for all of you that I have not met, Chad Davis, Engineering Manager at Rollin Municipal Utilities. So, this will be similar to a pump station we're constructing at Nagogami across from Highway Patrol, about a 12-by-20 building, concrete block, metal roof. It's a little bit larger, but similar in concept to a couple, our wells scattered around town. One, we have some wells in residential neighborhoods, concrete block buildings. The pumps and the motors are all contained inside the well building, so to try to minimize noise. This building, some of our older wellhouses actually have windows in them to allow for airflow. This building will have no windows in it either, so garage door, man door, concrete block building, and a roof. So, it should be pretty, pretty unobtrusive. Normally do them like a dark brown type, or brown color of block, so that they're unobtrusive, so kind of blend in.
Okay. If you could, you might, if you've just got an image or two of an existing, something comparable. I know nothing is exactly the same, but...
I should have thought to bring one, John, but I did not, so...
Yeah. Senator, we can, you mail that around.
Yeah, we do. We definitely will, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Just a couple more questions. It will be checked daily, is that correct?
Probably daily. We haven't, these pump stations are going to be new to us, so we haven't exactly established how we're going to operate them yet, but probably daily, maybe a couple times a day we'll have somebody's check on them. But generally, that's going to be a visit, open the door, make sure everything's running right, move on, because it's going to be remotely monitored. It's going to op, it's going to operate by itself based upon the pressure. It's going to turn on and off as need be. But we just want to lay, put eyes on it on a regular basis. We do the same thing with our wells currently, where we continue to, we look at those on a regular basis, just to make sure everything's running properly.
Okay.
And then, obviously, mowing the yard, pushing the snow, things like that.
All right. I understand that the property extends up to White Columns Drive, but there will not be access from White Columns Drive, correct?
Correct. We're going to put a driveway just on Merriweather. On the White Columns side, there's so much vertical difference between White Columns and Merriweather. We didn't want to put the driveway off of White Columns, just wasn't going to work out very well. We will be clearing a path to take electric and water to the, electric to the facility from White Columns, and then also water from the facility back up to White Columns. So, there'll be a narrow clearing of trees in order to get those utilities in and out of the property, but overall, we're not going to be accessing it off of White Columns.
That was my next question. The tree line there on White Columns, will it be disturbed?
We're going to disturb just as, no more than we need to, just to get the electric in the water in.
It's not going to be like this open, right through to the other side?
No, we're not, we're not planning on, yeah, we're not planning on clearing the property. We're planning on leaving the trees there. There's no reason to clear the trees if we don't need to.
All right. And then, just the other was confirmation on noise and how loud it might be?
The, the pumps in there are going to be roughly 50 horsepower, smaller pumps, and for comparison's sake, one of our wells, some of our wells have 200 horsepower motors in them, and so, smaller motors, and we don't have noise concerns from those wells that I know of in residential neighborhoods right now. These will be smaller pumps.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions? Back over to Tom.
Let's see if we have some citizen input. Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of the proposed rezoning that would like to speak for the proposed rezoning? Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of the proposed rezoning that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet of the proposed rezoning that would like to speak for? And finally, is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet of the proposed rezoning that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? If there's not, are there any other questions that council has either for Chad or Tom?
I would just say at the planning and zoning meeting, no one came to speak for against it in that form either.
Thank you, Nathan.
That being the case, we'll officially close the public hearing and have the first reading.
An ordinance to approve the rezoning of property located at 931 Merriweather Road from the R3 multifamily residential district to the P public district.
We have one item under the topic consent agenda, and that is to consider a motion to accept the utilities. Darren?
So, staff is requesting a motion to accept utility easement from Curie University in Missouri. This is so that RMU can install a water line across university property, so staff does recommend accepting the easement.
Questions?
I think Watts Drive is the one kind of near Stonehenge, so it's back behind the housing development that the university has, right?
I mean, Watts Drive is, I mean, it's over by TJ Hall, correct?
No, Watts Drive being north, like you said, by Stonehenge.
Yeah.
And this is new water main from Watts Drive going west on the north side of the residential complex.
So, is this all on S&amp;T property? Is that, okay, that's what I thought is understanding.
If there's no further questions, is there a motion to accept the utility easement?
I'll make that motion.
Darren will second.
Motion made and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Acknowledgement and/or special presentations. We have one from Rebecca West, which...
My name is Rebecca West. I'm with Missouri S&amp;T, and my job is to work with events at S&amp;T, and of course, Celebration of Nations falls under that. And so, I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about Celebration of Nations and all that we have going on this year. So, Celebration of Nations will take place on Saturday, September 20th, and it marks our 16th year anniversary for people to get together to celebrate all the many different cultures and traditions represented in our community. This initiative began as a campus and community collaboration, and has grown into one of the largest international events in the region, drawing residents, students, families, businesses, and visitors together to honor global heritage and shared experiences. The parade, which kicks off the day and starts at 11:00 a.m., like normal, is a favorite for many people. It features over 160 different country flags from around the world, student and community groups in traditional attire, international music, dancing, and some incredible sense of energy. Following the parade, the downtown festival will include food vendors, cultural displays, live performances on three different stages, interactive children activities, and educational booths. We will bring back our beloved camels and petting zoo and the fun passport game. We're excited to share that this year's event is receiving additional support through a very special grant from the Route 66 Centennial Commission. Hopefully, some of you have heard about that. The funding will help us broaden over, broaden our reach and raise awareness of the event beyond Rolla. We'll be advertising in Jefferson City, Springfield, and St. Louis to encourage more regional attendance with the goal of significantly increasing the number of visitors and participants this year. This grant will also allow us to tie in themes of travel, connection, and shared history reflecting the legacy of Route 66 in a way that complements the global spirit of the festival. As part of the celebration, local businesses are invited to sign up to receive a free commemorative three-by-five flag featuring both Route 66 and the Celebration of Nations branding. Displaying these flags in storefronts not only show community pride, but also helps create a more festive and welcoming atmosphere throughout Rolla in the weeks leading up to the event. Businesses can sign up online at nations.mst.edu, and the flags will be delivered by our Rolla, our Celebration of Nations interns, who are our Rolla High School students. We're also excited to introduce a new feature this year to enhance the food experience at the festival. Every food vendor will now display a clear and easy-to-read menu listing all of the available food and drink items along with the prices. These menus will also include spice level indicators, as we know our cultural food can be a little spicy sometimes, and so, the hot peppers designate, you know, one is minimal and three is beware. It also includes information about allergens, so if anybody's allergic, it'll include what is in the food as well, so that's good. An event of this scale would not be possible without continued support of our city leadership, public works, public safety teams, local businesses, and all of our superior sponsors. I want to personally thank all of them for the coordination effort that goes into making an event a success year after year. We welcome your continued partnership as we finalize all of the logistics, particularly in the areas of all the street closures and the trash services, public safety, and volunteer coordination. And I just, I would like to warmly invite all of you to attend Celebration of Nations this year. Hopefully, you all have, but come back and see us. The students absolutely love to be vendors and participate. At a time when it can be, we can all feel a little uneasy and disconnected, Celebration of Nations reminds us how shared experiences, histories, and culture can bring people together in meaningful ways. We are honored to continue the tradition right here in Rolla. To learn more about Celebration of Nations, you can go to nations.mst.edu. We have all kinds of opportunities from students to community members, businesses, all kinds of things, and there's links to everything there. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions that I can answer?
Rebecca, it's an absolutely wonderful event, and it does so much to put, you know, Rolla on the map. I am curious, you know, over the years, it's gotten bigger and better in so many ways. How big is the budget this year and the revenue between the university and the sponsors? What does that look like?
Right now, we got an amazing grant. So, you know, typically, our budget is much lower, but this year, we were able to get, secure a grant from the Route 66 Commission that put us about $58,000. The grant was $50,000, and then we have added in, you know, as well. And we have sponsors, local sponsors, as well as S&amp;T, so...
Because it used to be 20 or 25,000.
Yes.
So, now, you got 50, university throws in eight, and whatever sponsors, so that's a huge increase.
Right. And we have, we've, with our grant money, we're purchasing three big billboards in each one of those cities, and as well as advertising, that's going to be down 44 as well as 54 toward Jefferson City to be able to bring in our tourist, for Celebration of Nations as well as just Route 66, so, and that'll happen this year and next year.
Bar for 2026 now is...
I know, I know. I'm going to try. I'm going to bring it.
Thank you. Any questions for Rebecca?
I have one, just real quick.
Sure.
Do you work with the Chamber of Commerce at all on any of the tourism grants?
Yes, we received, we received the tourism grant this year as well, the $1,000, yes.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Great job, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to all business, we have three items. First is an ordinance amending Section 22, 168 of the city code.
Yeah, this is an issue that surfaced when we were in the process of negotiating for the new city administrator. In Section 2-168 of the Rolla City Code, there's the provision that really says that the city administrator serves at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council, but if there is an involuntary, involuntary separation for political purposes or for any purpose, there is a severance that was provided for in the existing ordinance. When I came 28 years ago, I had a separate contract that provided for a six-month severance. And so, when we were in the process of negotiating that, this time around with Keith, his attorney pointed out that the contract had a conflict with the city code. So, what we propose is really just adding the language, and it's the section in parentheses, we're still retaining the two-month severance pay, but it would be unless otherwise provided for by a separate employment contract. And of course, that's what we have for Keith at this point coming forward. So, this is just an issue of clearing up a potential conflict in city code with the next city administrator.
Any questions for John? If not, can we have a final reading?
An ordinance amending Section 2-168 of the Rolla City Code and enacting a new Section 2-168 pertaining to the removal of the city administrator.
Move to accept.
I second.
Motion made and accepted. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Falch?
Yes.
McNevan?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Motion is approved. The next item is to consider an ordinance for a tower lease agreement.
So, staff negotiated a lease with Whisper Internet, so they can put their equipment on the water tower at the Rolla National Airport. Some of the key terms are, it's a five-year lease, they cannot, Whisper cannot interfere with any other lessy. It's $335 a month with an annual 3% increase, and they will provide insurance naming cities additional insured. So, staff is requesting the final reading of the ordinance, authorizing the mayor to execute this contract. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
And David, I was just saying, that's the same amount that we're getting off our existing incumbent antenna that's on the water tower.
Correct.
If there's no further questions, can we have a final reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the City of Rolla, Missouri, and Whisper ISP LLC.
Is there a motion to approve?
Sheriff will make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
McNevan?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Falch?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Motion is approved. Next item is to consider an ordinance to codify an agreement with Pierce Asphalt.
So, at the last meeting, council ordered the bid for asphalt phase four to the low bidder, Pierce Asphalt LLC. So, tonight, we're asking for the final reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor to end the contract with Pierce Asphalt for $199,819.40. Any questions?
If there's no questions, can we have a final reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the City of Rolla, Missouri, and Pierce Asphalt LLC.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Darren will second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Shelby?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
McNevan?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Falch?
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Motion is approved. Moving on to new business, first item is to consider a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement.
So, back in February, council authorized staff to put together a grant agreement with the Delta Regional Authority for a stormwater project in the downtown area. We did put in for that grant in April. A few weeks ago, we were notified that we were awarded that grant. So, this is a, you know, estimated cost of this project's 2.5 million, of which half of that would be coming from the DRA funds. So, the DRA does require a resolution to accept this grant, so tonight, staff is recommending approval of a resolution accepting the DRA grant for stormwater improvements in the downtown, and also authorizing the city administrator to execute any other related documents.
Darren?
Mm-hmm.
When do you plan on doing the work?
So, hope is to go out to bid next spring, summer, do the bulk of the work.
2026. So, how to put this nicely, this is going to have a major disruption to downtown.
Yes.
So, you know, the city always gets blamed, you didn't tell us, you didn't tell us fast enough, you didn't tell us enough times, blah, 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 blah. How do you intend to notify the people downtown of the impact of this? Because it, it will be significant.
Sure. So, planning on a couple things. So, first of all, I'm going to the next downtown association meeting, so I'm going to start trying to attend those, you know, regularly, you know, to keep all the downtown businesses, you know, up with the schedule and what's going on. The other thing, the plan was have, you know, some neighborhood meetings. I'm not sure where we'd host it yet, probably one of the churches in the downtown. Before we go out to bid, let everybody look at the plans, and then try to have those, you know, once a month during the project. And then, of course, you know, the businesses that are, you know, right there directly affected, you know, should be knocking on doors two or three times a week, letting know what's going on.
Is the project such that it could be staged, or once you start digging up the street, it's, you're digging up the street?
Once you start digging up the street, then we're digging up the street.
Because you kind of thought you would be able to do it in a block at a time.
I mean, it'd be block at a time, but, I mean, once we start, there, there won't be any stopping.
So, I know this is a little bit of wild-ass gas, but start to finish is how long, do you think?
So...
Weeks, days, months?
Months.
Months.
I mean, this, I mean, this will be an all-summer project.
Is the bid constructed to give any incentives for time?
So, typically on a project like that, yes, we'll do that. You know, example was the Highway 72 extension, when we did that project, you know, time was very important to us. So, you know, we had a clause in the contract that if they got the project done early, they got paid extra money. I mean, ultimately, what, what that'll look like in this contract, I haven't got that far yet, but I think that would be our intention, would be, you know, make time of essence and put a clause in there to, you know, pay them extra money to get it done early or significant damages if they get done late.
So, is there an opportunity in the meetings with the downtown folks, is there enough time to get some input from them on the impact to their business? So, that would help you decide what kind of incentive to give to the contractor, right? Because you don't want to throw money away, but it's not significant enough, it's not an incentive, but...
Absolutely. So, I mean, normally, the incentives have got to be enough that they can afford to pay their, their help over time, or they're not going to do it. It's not worth it to them.
If these businesses have business interruption insurance, some people have it, some people don't, would a project like this...
Probably not.
I don't know.
It's not an act of God or something like that?
Yeah. I doubt that business interruption would cover it. And we're going to be able, we're going to require that they have access to the businesses, so it's not like they're going to be able to make an easy impact. And most of this is going on Rolla Street, so while it does kind of branch off, Rolla Street doesn't have that high retail segment that we would see on some sections of Pine Street until we get to the sixth block, Sixth Street block.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just add real quickly, and I think we shared this all with council, we got this award. This, it is amazing that we got this award. This is a Delta Retail Authority, actually extends from New Orleans, works its way up to Missouri. Phelps County is the actual northern series of counties to be in that basin. We happened to get the $50,000 grant through DRA, first time we ever got funding from them two years ago when we did the comp plan. Dawn was selected to be a DRA executive leadership program participant. Dawn was selected to be a DRA executive leadership program participant. We think all of that helped in, and then, of course, we reached out to businesses and had probably 15 businesses send letters all in downtown area saying stormwater impact is having an adverse impact on them, and so all of that contributed to our competing for this grant. So MRPC did the application and really deserves a lot of credit for pulling this together.
So John and Darren, those letters weren't just a letter of support, they required, as I remember, an investment.
There was two. One was sort of just a letter of endorsement and investment, the other one was a letter of a commitment from employment. And I don't know that we ended up getting...
We got one.
One of those.
So who administers that?
Who administers what?
So, somebody went on record, it says, "I promised to invest in my business, blah, 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 blah." There's a requirement there.
Yes.
So who's gonna manage that that person did that?
At the end of the project, DRA will require us to go back to that business, and they would fill out another form that states, you know, that they did that.
We anticipate having MRPC as the administrator of this project.
Right, absolutely.
So I don't, I'm not asking who the entity is, you don't have to tell me, even if you knew. But somebody should reach out to them that says, "Hey, remember you wrote this letter? This is a commitment."
I've already done that.
Okay, thank you.
In this case, they have, I think, one employee, and they're promising to continue to have one employee, so I think the risk is pretty low.
There were a few that were interested in doing more, but then, when they knew that that was an obligation to perform, they backed off it, so...
Short armed?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Darren?
I think that's great. Thank you for the update on that, John. I remember reading the email when it came out.
And this was work, I remember Steve Hargis telling us 10 years ago, we were gonna have to spend a couple million dollars on this project, so the fact that we got 50% covered under grant from DRA is really, Darren's team pulled together the application with MRPC and the downtown groups supported it, line to help promote that through the RDBA. It was really kind of an all-hands-on-for-a-quick turnaround.
Very timely, so, I mean, we're working on budget right now, so this project will be in the budget for next year.
Yep, that's good.
MRPC did a great job...
They did.
...putting all the pieces together for this.
I should say legislators all sent letters of support, so that's just what it takes to get these done.
Darren, a quick question. So the 50% match, is it up to 200, 2.5 million? Like, what if we go over budget, do they cover 50%?
They would not.
Pass that, or just up to 50% of the 2.5?
Up to what they've committed right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can you read the resolution?
A resolution accepting community infrastructure funding through the Delta Regional Authority for stormwater improvements and authorizing the city administrator to execute related documents.
Is there a motion to approve said resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Paulson, second.
Second.
Motion made and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to claims and/or fiscal transactions, we have two. First one is to consider a motion to award a contract to McQueen Emergency. Chief?
On July 9th, the city of Ralla Fire and Rescue received bids to purchase firefighter turnout gear. The city solicited bids from several turnout gear manufacturers, and the department received one bid from McQueen Emergency from Eureka to purchase 10 sets of athletic turnout gear manufactured by MSA Globe. Currently, each of our firefighters wear athletics turnout gear manufactured by this company. Our personnel unanimously endorsed the purchase of this specific turnout gear, as it provides greater comfort and lighter weight, and has a lot of built-in safety factors. In January of '24, the city of Ralla was awarded an ARPA grant through the Department of Homeland Security for the purchase of turnout gear. Our agency received a $27,900 grant that requires a 50/50 hard match. The department will use approved funds from the 24-25 budget to match the grant requirements. The department is recommending a motion to award the bid of 5,625 per set to McQueen Emergency for a total of $56,250 and approve the purchase of same.
Chief, for the public and the council, can you explain what turnout gear is?
So in this case, we're talking about the pants and the coat and nothing else, so that's, it's pretty expensive, but that's the turnout pants and the coat that we wear that keeps us safe when we go into a structured fire.
Any questions by council?
That's cheap to keep you safe.
We would agree.
Yes.
So with the $27,900 grant, that means about $28,000 is what would come out of the regular budget?
$28,350, yeah.
And what do you do with the old gear?
That's a good question. Mr. Butts asked me that same question. So we replace a third of our department's gear per year, so the gear has a 10-year NFP recommended lifespan. So when I receive new turnout gear, my turnout gear is now put to side as backup gear, so when my gear's wet or needs washed, has some kind of contamination that I can put on my backup gear. At the end of the six-year cycle, though, we wash that gear and we store it. We keep that gear in case we have, we're out on a tractor trailer accident or something, and a lot of our gear gets contaminated, we have to have gear, and if it's all contaminated, we have backup to the backup so we can keep running calls.
Okay.
New hires, when we hire new hires, we can use that backup gear as well to outfit them for, you know, the first year or two till we get them fitted and get them their new gear.
Is it eventually thrown away?
It is. After the tenure cycle, it's destroyed and thrown away.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Chief, I'd just also like to add that this is money that we budget every year, but it's kind of unusual when the ARPA funding or grant funding actually allows us to reduce our out-of-pocket expense. This has always been an annual general fund expense, and so...
Right. And this is the second year in a row we've been able to get this grant. It's not available for next year, so we have to budget for the whole amount, but any chance we can get a grant, we definitely try and take advantage of that, so...
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Is there a motion to award a contract to McQueen Emergency?
Turbin will motion that.
Darren, second.
Motion made and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is to consider a motion to award a bid to Wade's Equipment. Floyd?
So we received bids looking for a placement on our 2015 mower for a 2025 zero-turning radius floating deck mower, a 72-inch hydraulic lift. So we contacted direct mail 21 different vendors, and then we also emailed those as well. We received the bids that you have before you. We tend to go with diesels because they tend to last a lot longer. We're mowing a lot in the park, so our staff is recommending the low bid from Wade's Equipment for the cube boat as ZD 1211. Questions?
Any questions for Floyd?
And Floyd, why don't you just share what we do with the surplus items there you have in the write-up, just for the record?
Yeah, so, we use them as long as we can use them, which tends to be anywhere from seven to 10 years that we get out of these. And then, once we have used them as much as we can, then we use them, train them to the airport, and they get typically another three years or so out of them until they're just not able to go anymore. So we really get, I think, a pretty good return on what we do, the fact, the longevity of how we use them.
And then with the surplus out, or GOV deals?
Right, at that point, once, yeah, we get what we can get from them, from GOV deals after their use that they have...
For parts, basically.
Right, yeah, yeah.
What do we normally get for those? Is it a few hundred bucks, or is it a thousand bucks?
You might remember. Can you think what we get for a used, yeah, used mower?
We've gotten as low as $3,000, a size eight.
That's not bad.
Any other questions for Floyd? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Turbin will second.
Motion made and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Floyd. Citizen communication, is there anyone that would like to speak to city council? Ray, we don't want this meeting to go too quick. You sure?
I don't have to. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, really?
Well, not what I want to say. Here, I'm not...
Okay. Mayor and city council comments?
I have one. I did the kids' safety day with the BPAC Committee, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee on Saturday at Lions Club, and it was a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun. I have to give a shout-out to Scott Profit. He handled everything from bringing our stuff back to City Hall and making sure trash got removed, and we gave away a lot of helmets. The city was able to do that, and Ken was there at the latter part of the shift, and he's good with kids. That was fun. We had fun with those kids. And we had a junior cadet there named Caleb, who just did a really great job showing the kids how to put the helmet on, and so, anyway, that's a pretty neat event. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to attend and be a part of that, and we had a pretty good turnout, even though it was super hot that day, so...
One thing I want to mention, you know, we spent a good part of last year talking about the library, and a lot of angst over a book, and I don't want to relitigate that whole story again, but, you know, in the paper last week and a week before, the library had a really nice event, kids' event over there, where they had an alpaca come in and book reading and things like that. And it was really a nice article. When I reached out to the librarian, she told me the library's summer reading program so far this year had the equivalent of 17,000 books that were read. That's phenomenal.
Yep.
That's phenomenal. So they do an absolutely terrific job there, and that's all I'll say about the library.
I want to add to your comments, because when my daughter grew up loving that library, and when she comes down with her son, it's the first place my grandson wants to go, is to the library here in Ralla. And I absolutely love the library. They do such a fantastic job with their reading program. They are doing awesome activities with the kids. They have painting for adults, and for adults, it's really fantastic.
It does. They do it, and they do it, and they don't brag on themselves enough.
Not at all.
They really don't.
It's really well done.
I've only ever seen one other library that does, you know, on par with that, and that was rivaling a big city, Mount Auburn, Illinois. This library rivals them with not even close to the same budget, so...
Yeah, do a great job. Any other city council comments, or comments for the good of the order?